Thank you all for coming tonight to Serrano Water District's Town Hall Meeting. Tonight, we want to give you guys a lot of information on what's going on with your water and what's going on with your water district. Tonight, we have sitting up here the Serrano Water District Board of Directors. I'm one of five. One of our folks here, Mike Pelley, is zooming in, if you will, so he's online watching it right now. The five directors you guys have, we each have a district in Villa Park. So I'm District One, and then we got District Two, District Three, District Four, District Five. We're water users and we're Villa Park residents, just like you guys. So it's utmost important to the five directors of Serrano Water District that we keep our rates in check, make sure our water quality is good, we get the same water out of our tap as you guys get, and I drink tap water. I mean, it's better be good, right? So it's gotta be right. So we're very much invested in this city. We love this city, and water is a very important asset for all of us. And there's been a lot of things going on with water these days. In our case, we have some big projects up and coming that we're going to share with you tonight. So I guess tonight, we're going to run this kind of like a regular meeting, so I'd like to start with a flag salute. Nicole, would you lead us in the flag salute, please? If you don't mind.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nicole. All right, so our general manager of Serrano Water District is this young man right up here, Mr. Jerry Vylander.
Not young.
He's been with the district, I guess, seven years, Jerry? Going on eight, almost?
No, nine going on ten.
Oh, never mind. Nine going on ten. See what I know. Anyways, we've come up with a PowerPoint presentation to go over, and Jerry is going to go through that presentation with you. And unless any other directors have something to mention, I guess we would tee it off to Jerry.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. One thing I would like to ask you is to save questions till the end. You know, if we see there's maybe three or four people showed up, we probably would have been a little more interactive, but there's more than three or four, so let's keep the questions at the end, if possible, unless something is really glaring that we need to address. Otherwise, please wait till the end. Appreciate it. So, welcome to our meeting tonight. A little brief history, we do this at every Town Hall Meeting. So in 1876, Serrano Ditch Company was formed by the farmers in the area, just up, you know, up San Diego Creek, to divert water from San Diego Creek, so we can get water to what is known now as Villa Park and Mayberry Ranch. So in about 1910 to 1920s, the farmers surveyed the San Diego Creek watershed to find the right placement of a dam to secure native water supplies carrying into the dry years for farming. So after they had found the perfect place at the study in 1927, the Serrano Irrigation District formed as a public agency out of the Serrano Ditch District, as well as the Carpenter Irrigation District, they formed as well, basically the same day. And that was to form a public agency so they could actually float bonds in order to be able to pay for the San Diego Reservoir Project back in 1931. So today, the parties share the ownership of the reservoir and the land surrounding that, and there are water right permits, some of the oldest in Orange County, which allows Serrano to meet all of its needs locally in many of the years. So we have the ability to store and sell water to other water agencies, and we're entitled to 25% of the water rights on the San Diego Creek, up to the Villa Park Dam, actually. We actually hold rights at the San Diego Creek Dam and the Villa Park Dam. And Irvine Ranch Water District, they hold the other 75% ownership and rights of San Diego Creek Dam. So no other water agency in Orange County has a lake that has the flexibility to supply 100% local native water after a wet year to its customers. Only Serrano Water District has that ability to do that. Irvine Ranch Water District does not have that ability because they have such a huge area they serve, that the water they have in San Diego Creek Reservoir or Irvine Lake is much less of an impact to its residents. So the San Diego Reservoir is a unique resource in Orange County, excuse me, resource, the local supplier that does not rely on Northern California or the Colorado River, even though we do at times import water from the Colorado River, but we don't necessarily depend on that. Typically, we have enough water in Irvine Lake after a wet year that can carry us through for Serrano Water District's ratepayers, but however, what we do is we do try to, I would say, utilize the water as soon as possible to minimize the evaporation. So... And then, we also have the ability to actually pump almost 100% groundwater at times as well. So, Serrano Water District, and this will be very, I will say this is going to be a little repetitive at times because we were trying to absolutely send a message here of the important resource that we have in Irvine Lake, so there will be some repetition, so just bear with me. So, Serrano Water District owns 25% of Irvine Lake. It's reliable, uneruptible water supply. It's a local native water supply. It's low-cost water, which offsets the need to purchase high-cost import water. It's local control, and it's much less dependent on import water, as other water agencies are much more dependent on import water. So in April 2023, the Biden Administration proposed some alternatives to cutting back water from the Colorado River. And then, to kind of show you what happens with the federal government, how they can really impact people in California and then more locally, in May, there was a little bit of a compromise to where California, Arizona, Nevada will voluntarily conserve 3 million acre-feet of the water until 2026, which is about a 13% cutback of allocation to or from the river. On a positive note, again, we have San Diego Creek Reservoir, and we have native water, and typically, there's enough water to carry us through to supplement our groundwater needs. So some other things that impact Serrano and other water districts is now, the Orange County Grand Jury came out with a report where they're basically telling folks that, "Look, we're still in a historic drought. We still have problems. Yeah, we had historic rains, but hey, you know what? We still need to look out and watch out for the future. We expect there to be droughts to continue." Which, I can read this verbatim, but you probably don't want me to, right? The bottom line is that, they're telling us that water management in California can be the best summed up as a study that's never solved. I can tell from my personal experience here at Serrano, we've actually solved it at Serrano Water District, because we have actually procured water rights back in the 1910s and the 1920s. Not many other folks can tell you that in Orange County. We've actually, in a way, solved that problem. We have the lake, and we have groundwater. What the Grand Jury is doing is they're taking other areas of Orange County that are very restrictive supply, that definitely depend on much more import water than we do, but the Grand Jury is saying, "Well, we need to sort of share, you know, and sort of help those folks down in South County." And then putting more restrictions, or potentially more restriction, on North County, the folks of you here at Serrano Water District, who overlay a groundwater basin and have Irvine Lake. We solved the problem. Other people haven't, or other agencies have not. So this full report can be found on our website, and you can also probably go on the Grand Jury's website as well. So a couple little excerpts from there. "Water is the most precious resource." They expect, they're saying, and then there's folks out there, they're saying that we're going to have longer droughts and much more extreme weather, and having to conserve much more, leading to much more, we think, more mandated rationing. Now, I'm going to go back to 2013, 14. Much of that drought, where we told you to please restrict and conserve 36%, we actually had the water. The state forced us, mandated us, to cut back when we had the water. They threatened us with fines and et cetera. So the Orange County Grand Jury recommendations are that the OC supervisors form a climate resiliency district, or the OC supervisors form a joint powers authority to explore drought-resistant source. And they want the public agencies to expedite construction of a desalination plant, which will increase your water costs significantly if that desal plant is built. And then also that the agencies and cities develop an emergency moratorium plan to deal with the Colorado River restraints that are expected to happen, that they want a plan by the end of 2023. Whoops. So, things that also impact Serrano customers are the rising cost of purchased water. So the Colorado River supply cutbacks, they're saying is going to be due from the last extreme drought we had. They expect more low levels, even though we're seeing it rise. Some of this data they have, they kind of tell you one thing one week, and they tell you something else the next week, right? You're seeing it rise up. So, and then, climate change is expected to be an impact on the cost of purchasing water as well. And Metropolitan is implementing what they call an indirect potable reuse project, or a direct potable reuse project, where they're going to invest millions, if not almost billions of dollars, in Carson to take water from, I believe, the Hyperion Sewer Treatment Plant, and then recycle the water and utilize that in maybe the LA basins and also Orange County basins. But it's going to be very expensive water. Other impacts to water costs are groundwater PFOS compliance cleanup, and then possibly the Grand Jury may impact your costs as well. So, again, this is going to be a little repetitive. So our sources that we have here at Serrano, or you folks, being as our ratepayer, is low-cost native San Diego River, or excuse me, San Diego Reservoir supply. We also have the groundwater, which is less expensive than import, but it's still increasingly, it's increasing sharply due to PFOS cleanup. And then, the other source is, occasionally, we have to buy high-cost import water to import into the lake. We have no connection of treated Metropolitan water. Any imported water we receive, we have to buy from Metropolitan, from Lake Matthews, and bring it through a pipeline, and it, in other words, it would dump into or connect into Irvine Lake, and then we take it through Irvine Lake and treat it in our treatment plant here over off of Cannon and Taft. Little system overview, these are the things that obviously impact cost of water because we have to do operations and maintenance, and that's, there's 2,285 meters, we have 42 miles of pipeline, 358 fire hydrants, et cetera. We have two groundwater wells. A demand typically now, in previous to 2013, we had a 3,200 acre-feet-a-year demand from the residents. Now we're down to 2,600 acre-feet demand. So you've got, you folks have done very well on, you know, conserving, but, you know, conservation leads to then less income, obviously, right? So unfortunately. And then we also have a City of Orange supply and emergency connections with City of Orange. So PFOS in Orange County, what are PFOS? Well, I'll read the one sentence and I'll explain it. So it's a per and polyfluoroalkyl substance. The bottom line is, is that the years and years that, if you ever used to watch The Price is Right, and Bob Barker would say, "Come on down," and then Mr. Olson would say, "Hey, you're going to win the showcase showdown, and you're going to get that, the living room deal right there." And they say, "And the carpet is dacron polyester, saturated, stain resistant." That is basically all PFOS. It's a Teflon coating that your kids crawl all around on, and, you know, and it's everywhere. And almost every product you see, Teflon or a PFOS product is essentially in almost all the things you use. So, and probably more importantly, the cookware you have, even the non-stick pans from years ago, that is basically just hundreds of billions of particles of Teflon or PFOS. So do not stir your eggs with a metal fork. Make sure you use a plastic, you know, spatula when you're doing that. So to give you a little bit more framework on PFOS and water, the amounts of PFOS in the water that we're filtering out are absolute finite amounts, I mean, the finest amounts of PFOS compared to what you would get out of just cooking in a non-stick pan. So, they say it's 80 years of exposure drinking the water, and I could have someone else correct me on this, but it's many, 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 many years of an exposure to PFOS, of the levels that we have in our water here, compared to, you know, the levels you get in some of the other products. So, what did happen two, three years ago, the state did mandate, you know, that we do filter out PFOS out of the water, and if we do not do that, we would have to then notify the residents that we're still serving you water that had these very, very small trace amounts of PFOS. But the board said, "You know what? Let's just do the right thing. We want to have confidence, you know, you have confidence in your water system. Let's go ahead and get the filtration system going, shut the wells off first, and get it going." And so now we have the CL Ferris Filtration Plant, and where we can treat up to 3,000 gallons of water out of the wells over off, just behind our offices on Lincoln. So we also have the Walter E. Holwiler Treatment Plant, that's not a PFOS treatment plant, where we can treat up to 4 million gallons of water out of Irvine Lake, and that's native water from San Diego Reservoir, and also the flexibility of import water. Much of the system that we have here today at Serrano Water District is really tied to that treatment plant to take the water out of Irvine Lake. It'd be very difficult for us to say, "You know what? Let's just not deal with Irvine Lake anymore, and, you know, let's just pump groundwater and get another source." It's very difficult. We don't have the flexibility to shut the water off from Irvine Lake and then just find another source. Be very expensive. And other note is that during the construction of the PFOS plant, when we shut the wells down, we were taking almost 100% of the water out of Irvine Lake and serving the customers with that water. Very, very little other source water that we have. I think there was maybe 2% came from the City of Orange, so I correct that 100% to about 98%. Some other facilities we have is the Smith Reservoir and Booster Pump, which is over off of Taft and Sycamore, and we can store at maximum at 6 million gallons a day, but no reservoir sits at 6 million. It's fluctuating up and down, but it has the max capacity of 6 million gallons. We also, at the top, I wouldn't say at the top, but you go up Cannon and Carver, where there's the fire station off of Carver and Cannon. If you look to the right, there's two reservoirs up there. The larger one is Serrano's, and that's called the Locket Reservoir, where we pump water from the Smith Reservoir and pump it up to the Locket Reservoir, so we can basically just move water around in the system. So where are we today? Well, the state mandated inspection of all the dams and spillways in California back in 2018 due to the failure of the Lake Orville spillway. So, so after we inspected our dam, it was found, after doing many different types of structural analysis, there was what they call sounding or sonic, you know, they're doing these what they call drummy tests, where they tap on the concrete, and they, you know, do some soundings, they feel there's some issues with the spillway, therefore deeming it poor condition, still usable, though, with some restriction. And so, now that we have what we call a rated poor condition spillway with an extremely high-hazard downstream inundation, the state mandated that we replace the spillway. And they don't care what the cost is, they say, "You got to do it." So, like I said, we have an operational restriction, which then restricts that native low-cost water that we collect at the dam toward, during those last storms that we had, where you think Irvine Lake was filling up, we literally had to let out, between the Serrano's share of the water and Irvine Ranch's, we let out, I think, approximately $11 million worth of water just flowed right down to the ocean. Yeah. Was not, we were not happy about that. So in 2019, the design began of the full replacement of the San Diego Reservoir spillway and the outlet tower. As I, I already told you what was wrong with the spillway, so I'll just go right to the outlet tower. So we, in 2009, or prior to 2019, we were already looking at replacing the outlet tower. We had already found through a seismic stability analysis that that outlet tower was needing replacement. Much more lower cost, though, than what would lead to be for the spillway cost, though. We weren't panicking, even though we didn't like the cost, but we decided, once the state mandated the inspection of the spillway, let's hold off on the outlet tower so we can possibly combine the projects, so this way we didn't go tear down the spillway, or excuse me, tear down the outlet tower and then have to tear it back down again to put a spillway up. So what is the cost of all this now? So, the 2023 estimate at this point is $75 million, and that's Serrano Water District's share cost of that spillway and outlet tower. Certainly not a small number. So the cost of construction since COVID is essentially, I don't know if any of you have been building anything in Villa Park, or building ADUs, or doing garage additions, or whatever you're doing to your house, it's probably gone up about 40, 50, maybe 100% in cost. I know anything I try to do to my house is four, like, almost twice what I wanted to do five years ago. So our estimate that we have for our spillway has gone up essentially double since our estimate back in 2020, 21. And so if you look at, it's hard to see, but you look at that bottom number there, the high-range cost of the projects is approximately $30 million. That's, we don't know if that's the high range now, things have changed in the last six months since this report's been done. So what's the timeline on the replacement? I'm not going to read down every single line of this thing, but the bottom line is that we're in design right now. We expect to be, have a completed design by summer of next year, and we're expected to possibly start draining the lake in July of next year. I'm hoping we're not going to have to do that. We're going to see if we can delay this, probably like another year, so we could take advantage of the water we have sitting in there now. And then, we should start, if, with, delay it or not. If we don't delay it, you're looking at construction starting in July of 2025, but the DSOD at this time has a deadline that it's complete in 2029. So not only do we have some, you know, the San Diego Reservoir projects, but there are other capital projects that are needed to be completed at Serrano Water District. We found that the replacement of the Smith Reservoir and Booster Pump Station is, you know, imminent. We found some spalling concrete, it's 1960s design, and I don't know if you know, but not too many people were designing anything for seismic stability back in the 60s. So when they completed that reservoir in 1970, what, I don't know if you've been around, 1971 here, anyone, but, you know, there's a place called San Fernando Earthquake, and that changed everything in Southern California for seismic, you know, stability, but most, not too many people replaced things, you know, right away, so... But it's time that that reservoir is replaced. So right now, we're at a 25% design, and today's cost is $22 million, and we believe, even though it's a little optional to replace it right now, but we know that the Division, excuse me, the Division of Water Resources are likely will mandate us to replace that, because when they go through their inspection reports every couple of years, and we're showing them a condition, they're going to go, "Okay, you're, it's time for you to replace that." But as long as we show it on our project timeline, they give us a little leeway. And right now, we're exploring funding options for all the projects. So, you know, what are we exploring? Well, we're pursuing grants and long-term debt financing. So in May of 2023, we submitted a loan for a WIPF application, which that's basically a federal loan. It's almost like a 35-year loan, which is nice. You don't find too many loans out there in, you know, with public works projects, where you're going to get a 35-year loan. What it is, you get the money to use upfront for the five years of construction, and then you don't have to start making payments until the project's done, and then it's basically a 30-year loan after that. It's a great, it's a great vehicle for getting projects done. Excuse me. So, not only have we been pursuing loans, but we're doing what most other folks are doing out there. We're talking to all the politicians and all the people, movers and shakers out there, and say, "How can you help us get some of the federal money?" So we've have lobbyists now that have been assisting us, getting meetings with Congresswoman Kim and other very prominent influential electives out there, and so far, we have an earmark for $5 million for the Smith Reservoir Project, yet still be approved, but she has put an earmark in there that needs to go through, I believe, the House, which is supposed to be this week or next week. And then they'll determine what amount of that money, though, of that $5 million that the request is that they'll award. But then it goes through more, as you know. It grinds through the, grinds through the government wheels, as I would say. So there's also state appropriations for high-hazard dams, which this dam is, San Diego Reservoir. Right now, they're only looking at $400 million for appropriation, but we're one of nine dams in California that are high-hazard, and most of these dams that are high-hazard are already reaching at $300 million or more. There's one out there for a billion dollars right now. I think that's Ventura County or some other agency out there that, you know, so there's going to be competition for this. But we're poising ourselves to be competitive by having the lobbyists, you know, to do whatever we can to try to get that money. And by the way, we're not, as I said, we're not the only agency with these challenges. Many dams and spillways have been, you know, they're on a list for serious repairs. There hasn't been any dams built, with the exception of, I would say, the Diamond Valley and some of the ones out in the Inland Empire, that, but there hasn't been really any dams really before the 1970s. I mean, there's some, but the majority of them are way before 1970. You know, this dam we have is built in 1931, so... So, Serrano Water District's Board has directed staff to research what other agencies may participate or somehow offset these costs. I mean, and, I mean, maybe in some words, say, "Hey, how can we just get rid of this thing and, like, get rid of the problem and/or find some other means to offset the cost?" Well, we talked to Irvine Ranch Water District, who had basically said, "Go ahead and walk away from it, and we'll take on the project. And we'll, you can just get a connection of water and you can treat it, but there's no more free native water, there's no more water rights. Everything would just disappear, basically. It would be dependent on groundwater and someone else getting us the water." We talked to the City of Orange, there was not much discussion in there. They have their own challenges. Orange County Water District, chatted with them, no interest, and a few other agencies, there just wasn't an interest that, you know, that $75 million is, you know, seems pretty scary to folks. So, one of the options we looked at, as I mentioned, transfer the reservoir, just transfer the asset. The advantage would be avoid that capital cost and the debt service by just transferring the liability. The disadvantages to that, though, are is that you lose all the water and recreational rights, you lose a unique water supply asset and a flexibility that no other agency has, and you lose a significant revenue for Serrano from water sales and storage that we can potentially, better use the terms, lease storage to other agencies, South County folks, for a certain cost, because it is so much money to build a new reservoir. Folks in South County, for them to build another reservoir down there, to have any storage at all, of water, they have to buy, not even water that's free. They build a reservoir, 5,000 acre-feet reservoir- They build a reservoir, five thousand acre feet reservoir, almost a hundred, two hundred million dollars, just to take water. They can't even get for free to store it. So we think there's potential down, you know, when we're done with this project, that we may be able to have some storage agreements with folks, and that maybe also offsets some of the demands that the grand jury's putting on us or North County people. Say, hey, we're, we're helping folks out, but there's a cost to it, though, right? So, okay, so the disadvantages also are we have a complete inefficient use of the treatment plant. So the way this treatment plant was built essentially was to take water out of that lake, the native water and some import, but the cost of the water is essentially right now free. It won't be free when we, of course, rebuild the spillway, but right now is essentially the low, is almost free. I mean, there's costs, operations going out and, you know, maintaining things, but on the grand scale of cost of water, I mean, people call it free water. I mean, that's the bottom line. And you would have a very inefficient use of the treatment plant now because now you'd have a much lower flow going to the treatment plant because why would I want to treat, you know, three, you know, two thousand acre feet of extremely expensive import water, right, that isn't free anymore? No, I'd utilize the least amount of water and take as much of the cheap groundwater out of the ground. And then what, what is now, we're more vulnerable to emergencies. We lose that emergency supply because then we would be beholden to Irvine Ranch Water District and then pay them a storage fee to store water in Irvine Lake. We would no longer have that ability on our own. So, and it saves questions for now, it was a little complicated. So I may need to, let me explain a little bit more. So we have the ability right now, again, buy import water if we need to from metropolitan and store it in the lake, okay? But when it rains and it's rainwater in the lake, we're going to have to buy that water, that rainwater, at the same price as treated, excuse me, as import water. So it would no longer be free at all, okay? But we also don't have the ability to buy water and store it and sell to other people or sell the native water to other agencies. So what's another option? Well, retain the asset. And it's really, I repeat all the things I said, though, but change it into basically now it's an advantage, retain all the water and recreation rights, retain that unique local supply and flexibility, and you retain a significant revenue for Serrano to be able to sell wa, sell the water. And you have the ability to store, again, on behalf of other agencies and possibly have leasing deals and make, get leasing revenue from leasing to storage. And again, more efficient use of the treatment plant, and you have that native water supply rather than buying that high-cost import water. The disadvantage is the seventy-five million dollar nut, you know, you have significant So the board and discussion and meetings, and they're all, they're all open meetings, they're all, you know, we have public meetings. So they're, the best option that they thought was to essentially move forward with investing in the project as the best option for the ratepayers. Secures this position that we have an extremely reliable supply, and this way we retain the long-term ownership of the water rights, which limits exposure to the federal and state regulation. And the mid to long-term cost of project will be less than the cost of water over time under any of the other alternatives. And to explain that is that the cost of import water is going up, just going up, 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 up. But the water in the lake is rain, it's free, other than, of course, the investment you got to do to make sure you continue to capture it. So when that wa, that value of water is going over time, at a certain point, that water is so valuable that it's offsetting the cost of the loan. It's sort of like having a rental home, and they probably don't like this example, but you have a rental home and you're getting a two thousand dollars a rent, and you only have a hundred dollar a month house payment, but you got to put a roof on it that costs you three thousand dollars. Now you got a new loan. You're losing money for a while, but guess what? Rent costs are, you're going to be able to get more rent about ten years later, you can break even on your rent and your loan, and then after a while, your rent's more than what your loan payment is. That's the easiest example I have. So, so we'll continue to work hard on securing state and federal grants, look at local partnerships for sales of excess supply and storage with other agencies that may offset the cost of required capital improvement projects. So how do we pay for it all? You sort of heard it. Reserves, grants, loans and rate increases, unfortunately. So what makes up your rate? Well, regulatory compliance is one thing. I mean, there's so much regulation that, which are good, there's a lot of good regulation, though. We want to make sure we test your water, you know, and we do thousands of tests every year on water quality for bacteria, for, you know, lead, copper, I mean, all the elements. You get a water quality report, we do a lot of tests through the year. So regulatory compliance can be good, and then it can be a little over the top, I think some people can say. We also have capital improvement projects that we need to continually, you know, replace infrastructure. We have operation and maintenance costs. Right now, we're, don't have any debt, but there will be debt financing that occurs, okay? So, you know, that's going to make up the rate. And then conservation and consumption reduction mandates from the state are going to continually impact your rate. This is really hard to see, but you all have the handout. And if you look, and I can't even see this, that's pretty bad. So in 2013, groundwater was two hundred and sixty-six dollars an acre foot. Today, is this twenty-three, I would say twenty years later, that ten years, no, ten years later, you're looking at over double the cost for groundwater. So from 2013 to 2034, you're going from two sixty-six to twelve hundred dollars an acre foot for groundwater. And there's a lot of contribution of the rising costs moving forward are going to be the PFAS cleanup and the capital and O and M. On the good note, though, Orange County Water District has been, you know, with a, with a new expansion of GWRS, they've actually been able to increase the amount of groundwater we can pump out of the ground, meaning that we need to get less import water. But the thing is, as you know, we don't really need a lot of import water, but that frees up the availability for us to maximize the use of Irvine Lake and the water we have in the lake, which then offsets costs. That's currently, though. So I think in 2013 to 2034, you're looking at four hundred and fifty percent increase in groundwater cost. That's, yeah, big difference. And the import water cost, interestingly, is a two hundred and fifty percent increase in cost. So the import water cost is a little strange, hasn't gone up, it's gone up in a different way. It's very expensive to begin with, so, but it's two hundred and fifty percent over the twenty, twenty years. So probably more important to all of you, I would say, is what are our rate estimates over the next ten years? Now, one of the things I want to do before I point this out is that Tribuco Canyon Water District, I don't know if any of you have been watching the newspapers or any of the, what's going on, they, they, over the next five years, they're going to go over a hundred percent. They're basically going to double over five years their, their rates, yeah, significantly. Include the water sewer and their wastewater is going up, over double over five years. With all the projects that we have estimated here, we, and it sounds like a lop, but when I look at every other water agency who is faced with big projects like us, every agency is faced with tremendous capital projects right now that have gone up, like I said, two, three times in cost over the last five years. A lot of the projects are coming to roost, they have to repair them. Our costs over the next five years, this, or excuse me, ten years, is double. Not five years, ten years. So it's going to take us twice as long for our rates to double than a lot of the other agencies around us. So how it works is that, that we have an estimate in here, that two point eight seven percent CPI, that's an estimate based off a ten-year average. There's pass-through costs, which are the cost of groundwater going up. So sometimes we set rates, we're getting information, Warren County Water District, before, like just before we're getting ready to raise rates, where it's like, oh, they're going up fifteen, twenty percent, let's say. I'm just using an example, I'm like, well, we, you know, we need to, you know, we have to control that somehow and make sure that we maintain our revenue stream right so we don't fall behind. So what we do is we pass through that, whatever that cost of increase is above and beyond what our estimate is, of met in Orange County Water District. And then we have what we call projected capital infrastructure loan payments because we expect to be doing loans. So we, so we're building that into our model, into our rate increases, and there you go. That's the, that's our forecast for the next ten years. So this is, again, going to be a little repetitive. Why should Serrano Water District retain San Diego Reservoir? The water rights, that, some of the most important assets to retain. It's unique, flexible, low-cost water over the long term into perpetuity. You're having, you're maintaining your three sources of water that gives us alternatives in some of the most extreme emergency circumstances. And we've said this many times, reliable is uninterrupted water supply. During the PFAS shutdown, you still had water. You never not had water at your tap unless there was a main break or we're doing some repairs, but you have always had water at your tap. But that's it. Any questions?
Jerry, before you get into that, you sort of went over the grand jury report, and I think everyone needs to, they're saying that there's going to be drastic restrictions on landscaping water use. They're saying that simply the Colorado River dependability supply is not available in the future, and local groundwater, which we take, will not meet the large demands. So that is something I think this neighborhood, Villa Park, which I've been here for over thirty years, needs to understand that if we go and get rid of that lake, we're open to the vulnerability of having us basically look like Tucson, Arizona. And by having that lake, we can assure ourselves that we're not going to be in that situation. And I think it's extremely important from that standpoint to look at. And that, that was the one thing I wanted to say. The other thing I wanted to say is that I went through and did a study on the two alternatives we had, the two options that we had. And then 2045, 46, twenty-five years from now, if we get rid of the lake and we get met-treated water, which is our only other option, our rates will be at thirteen-seventy-eight, and we will have six million dollars in reserves, which isn't near enough. If we keep the lake during the same period of time, our rates will be fifty cents a unit less than if we get rid of the lake, and we will have sixty-four million dollars in reserves. So there's a lot that went into this and the decision the board made, and I want everyone to understand, we're in the same situation you're all in. My rates are the same as yours, there's no discount or anything else. So I want you to be assured, the board has done the best option that they can do for the, for the neighborhood of Villa Park. Any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
Do we know water rights, the groundwater?
Sure, I can take that. It's.
I'm Jeremy Young Rice, I'm legal counsel for the district. Water rights here to the groundwater are a little bit different in Orange County than pretty much anywhere else because Orange County Water District brings in water, Orange County Water District has certain water rights, and they replenish the groundwater basin. So there's never been an adjudication of who has what rights in groundwater. Essentially, you can pump what you, you can pump a lot, right? At some level of pumping, though, you get surcharged, and it gets, gets very, very expensive. And that's why, over a certain amount of groundwater pumping, it becomes kind of economically non-feasible because you get penalized so much to do it.
But to me, as individuals, you can't pump water out of our water.
I would, I can answer that because what happened was, from my understanding, is that Villa Park Mutual Water Company back in the sixties, they're the ones that have the water rights, and then what happened was, that was a mutual. So all of the landowners here sold their shares, and that sold their water right. And Serrano Irrigation District took those shares, and that's when they consolidated. So there's been a consolidation already, by the way. That was in the sixties with Villa Park Mutual Water Company and Serrano Irrigation District. Or, so, but those water rights transferred to Serrano, and they weren't even rights really, it's a right to pump or ability to pump and sell, retail water. It's a little more complicated, but I would say nobody has rights because the, the mutuals had the right and they sold those. What we have is a forecast of flat because what's going to happen is that we think that it's actually going to, I personally think there's going to be a reduction in use in water. And so what happens is that at first, you're going to see a flattening, you're going to see a decrease, right, and then, and then it's going to flatten again. But what it is, is that we've mandated that any new ADU in the state, the way their ADU laws are, is that they sort of are very gray in their ADU laws. So public hazard, you know, when I used to do cross-connection, I worked at the City of Westminster, any connection to a, to a house, off the house to another house, always had another meter because of what is the public hazard. So what is any new ADU, we require over five hundred square foot ADU, required a separate meter, so that revenue, that loss is going to be a little offset. But that's not why we did it, though, it's public safety because a lot of people are building, to get off subject, but a lot of people building these ADUs, and I know it's for mother-in-law and all that stuff, but, you know, ten years down the road, I don't know, my mother-in-law ain't going to be alive, but I'm going to rent it out, and I don't know who's going to be renting it, but you don't know what they're doing in the house. And then it can back siphon and backflow into your house. So that's why we have a separate meter connection, and there's a separate meter charge. But there is going to be a reduction in demand from those, but some other people are still going to be using landscape, so. That make sense?
Well, sort of. It's as much as you dare, that you can give us. I mean, we don't know what.
Well, that's, that's the thing. We were, we try to forecast the best we can, but a lot of times, water forecasting is voodoo science, in my opinion. You forecast the best you can, and then there may be people all of a sudden, hey, I want to start having grass again, you know, and then.
Historically, when rates go up, usage goes down. So to take a flat line was, I thought, was the best thing to estimate what we're going to do in the future because as we add ADUs, people are going to reduce because the rates are going up, and it'll, it should all balance out, is the best way, I think, to look at it.
It's not just ADUs, that's our city, but I look at the water consumption throughout the county and the people that are in the quarter. I mean, there's literally hundreds and hundreds of units being constructed every month here. And now we're faced with the situation of equality of use and acquisition, and acquiring water. Little towns like Villa Park are going to be, whether we're independent or not, we still exist at the pleasure of the state. So we may well be forced to give up some of our luxurious free water to balance out the poor people who have grown green in the South End.
And that's basically what the grand jury report would said. And all of you, I encourage you to go online and look at the grand jury report because they want to do exactly what you're talking about. And, and I think it's something, it's all more important for us to be sure to keep the water rights and the lake. If we give that up, then we're totally at the mercy of the state. Right now, it's a pretty good chance that we're not, I've got to ask the attorney if it, can they, could they just come in basically and say, hey, I don't care what water you have.
No, they really can't. I mean, they, they might, the state, the state has done some things that have surprised me over the last ten years, but, but no, it's a water right, it belongs to this district. It's for the benefit of the, of the residents of, of this district. And so, you know, we can transfer that water right, that's possible. And so, you know, we can transfer that water right, that's possible. And if we have excess, we can potentially transfer water to, like, the city of Orange. But, that's what's kind of unique here, in that you have a, so many people in Orange County rely on imported water. And, we have a connection to imported water, but oftentimes, we don't need it. Between groundwater, which is going up in cost, but still highly reliable, and the lake, which is, you know, some years it's drier, some years it's wetter, but every year, it's a local supply, and the fact you have carryover storage to kind of normalize between wet years and dry years, that's why we say it's uninterrupted supply, because you're gonna have, pretty much every year, you're gonna have local supply available. That means that when other places are, like, in the Central Valley, some places out there, I mean, it's just dire, right? At least until this year, they were in really bad shape. But, that should never happen here, as long as we have that lake.
Plus, if we, if we get to the point where we, where we're building the, the new spillway and everything, we're gonna be able to store another over half a year's worth of acre-feet, another 1,800 acre-feet of water. So, that's a little over half of what we typically use here.
You said, you said there's $11 million worth of water went down to, to the ocean that we could've stored-
We can't, we couldn't do it by law, because, because of the Oroville debacle, which the state of California was totally responsible for, really did not do their job, and so, everybody else has to pay. It's the Peter Principle in action, as, as, as we all know how that works. But, but, but the, but the fact is that, with this repair, what we need to do for the berm and the spillway, it will allow us to store a lot more water here for us, and Irvine Ranch as, as well. Everybody's gonna share in that. So, that's, that's a big boon for us. It's almost, we could almost get by on that on a very, very dry year. And then, you, the complex, the complexity of it, as, as we've been trying to point out, it is, we've had a lot of spirited discussions, I'll put it that way, over all this. And we've had, must be 30 meetings about this. And, and that's, that goes beyond also the outside reading we have to do. So, this, this is the, the best thing we've come up with. We're trying to offset, and we didn't emphasize it too much at first, but to get any offset we can from our federal or state or regional authorities. We're trying to get that, and we're very active in this. And so, we're trying to, any, anytime we get another 3, 5, 10 million dollars, it takes our cost way down, and that, with the loan, goes down considerably. So, it's, the reliability of you to turn the tap on and to take a shower is what we're, what we're after here. And then, a lot of the charges that you, that have changed over the years, they're ready to serve, being able to have the water come to you, is, is a bigger portion than, for, for every water district now. So, it's, unfortunately, it's getting more sophisticated, more complicated. But, our district here is pretty straightforward. It's very, very straightforward. And, we're, I think, we're, we're fortunate in that.
Couple of questions, or a couple of comments I have, real fast. First off, not to belabor ADUs, but the biggest use of water in a household is really your outside watering and your lawns and all that. So, truthfully, if you build an ADU on your lot, you're, have less outside watering in general, because all of that concrete for that ADU takes up some of that. The actual water we use in the home is really very small, and the government is still trying to limit us all down to ver, what is it, 50 gallons someday? Forty, they want us to use 45 gallons inside our home every day, at some point. But anyways, it is actually, so the less outside watering you do, that's where the majority of our water goes. So, that's just a quick comment. The other thing, when Jerry did his presentation, I want you all to understand, on this chart here, talking about groundwater cost, it says here, Orange County Water District. We said from 13 to 34, it raises 450%. That's not Serrano Water's rates to you folks, because I, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this. This is what we, Serrano Water District, have to pay them to get the water. So, we have to pay this, no, and every other city around us has to pay this as well. None, no one's excluded from that. So, we're the same as everybody on this. So, when we talk about Orange County Water District, this is the water we pump out of the ground with our wells. And, everybody in Orange County has to pay this, not just us. The other thing is this bottom chart, imported water, this is Metropolitan Water District. This is Colorado River Water or State Water, Project Water. And as you can see, from 13 to 33, it goes up 250%. Again, everybody has to pay this, including Serrano Water District. So, I just want everyone to understand, this is not our rates, this is what we have to pay to get that water. So, that's why the lake is so important to us.
Because we offset the use of that-
That's right.
And, also, the, the state project water and the water out of the lake is basically PFAS-free. Whereas, the, the groundwater here, and the groundwater is perpetuated by a pipe coming down Collins, and it goes into the, the bond pit out here. And then, it's, it's a horizontal diffusion into, into the ground. That's why you saw all the pumps, pumping going on over Villa Park Elementary, that's one of the, one of the testing stations, to see the movement of all these different chemicals, and not just PFAS, they'll have the ability to, to see all the, the migration, all these different chemicals through the aquifer we have here. This aquifer is a godsend to northern, north of Orange County. We, we are so fortunate to have that as, as, as a, as a primary reservoir. And then, we have the luxury, with Irvine Ranch, of having this lake, that was, it was basically, all the farmers knew, that there's gonna be dry years every three years, at least.
Something else, we talk about free water, well, we know that there's nothing free, you know what I mean? Less spending a lot of money to have that lake up there. But, power is a big thing, too, because to distribute the water, it takes a lot of power. One thing, the water in that lake, it, it runs into the lake naturally. When we take it out, it's gravity feed to our treatment plant right over here at the end of tap. No pumping necessary. And, of course, we have to maintain the pipe that gets it there. And then, also, when we, when we do buy, have water available from Colorado River, and, and we purchase it, that also is gravity feed from Math, Lake Matthews into our lake.
And, secondly, recreation, I talked about recreation rights, I know it's, it ain't what it used to be, because we ran that back up and made some money off of it.
What do you answer, Jerry?
I think that's, the, the issue with Irvine Ranch is that the offer was walk-away.
So, they're, they're not a, they're not a happy-go-lucky partner?
They're flush, they're flush.
They're, they're very flush with money. But see, this is another issue, is that, that it's, it's a touchy area. We don't have an ad lorum tax for our water district, like almost all the other ones do, all, except for Gold Reserve Water. There's tax money that comes on your, your annual bill, that goes right into those water districts.
Property tax.
Property taxes, and everything, all the other little taxes. We have none of that. We get nothing like that. What you pay us is what we get. That's it.
I think the problem is, you're asking 22, 85 people to pick up that cost.
Yeah, it's, it's an issue.
And there's, and there's nobody, it's that small, like, look at all the cities, and it doesn't exist. You're asking a small group of people to pay a lot of money, and our rates are really high.
Well, the, the only salvation is, if we don't do it, and we get rid of the dam, our rates will go up more, because of the groundwater and the import water. Believe me, we've done this study.
I mean, they don't pay anywhere here what we pay.
I can explain how Irvine Ranch Water District, when you look at their rates-
It's tiered.
It's tiered, but you don't even look at that. What it is, you need to do is, you need to go look in their operation budget, and their, and go on their finance. Don't look at the billing, look in their finance department and go on there, because what it is, is they get 75, and they're gonna be up over $80 million in property tax, that you don't, that you see at the end of year on your property tax bill, when it gets sent to you, and whatever that is. So, you're, so, I did a study last year, where, and someone can question me on this, but I think I'm pretty close to it, it's either $50 to $60 a month, on average, is what the IRWD customer is not seeing on their bill. So, you're thinking you're getting a sweet deal, oh, man, yeah, it's only $100, it's $160 bucks, not 100. So, they're hiding, and I don't wanna use hide, they were, they were put in a great position by the Irvine Company when they were created back in the 60s. They set them up with a slush fund, and, I mean, basically, a trust fund of money, developer impact fees, all these fees they're getting that we don't get, that they're getting as all these people are developing.
Spreading it around a lot of people.
They're spreading, yeah, but you're still not seeing the $60, like, we don't have a $60 hidden charge or $80 hidden charge.
You know, when you're paying 300, 400, 500 dollar waters, when they're paying 80 dollars.
Yeah, but it's the size of their lots. If you look at the size of their lots, can, pardon?
Their rates are lower.
Their rates are lower, if you have, if you had a small lot, your rates are lower. But if you go to their top tier, I looked at my rate on IRWD's rate schedule, my rates I'm paying now would be three times more through IRWD because of the size of my lot. If you have a real small lot, like an apartment lot or whatever else in, in Irvine, your rates are gonna be real low. But once you get up into those top tiers, your rates go up way above what our rates are. The other thing to consider, remember, there's only so many options that we have, because of the way our distribution system is set up. We can't do what the city of Palmas doing, or Yorba Linda, or whatever. We only have so many options to get water to this city. And, and, believe me, it gets down to two options. Do we give up the lake? Do we keep the lake? Keeping the lake, I'm telling you, our rates are gonna be lower, not a lot lower, but they're gonna be lower, and we're gonna have more reserves at the end of a period of time to work with for other capital projects that we have. IRWD went up last year 10%, 9.8%. They're gonna go up the next two years 9.8%, same basic rate that we're gonna go up. So, if you had a small lot, you're right. You're 100% right. Irvine would be the, the lowest rate you could get, because of small lot. You can't do this. Our, our units here average 40 units per month. Irvine is like 12 units per month. So, if you had a 12-unit lot per month, you're in that low-income tier. But if you have a big lot, you're gonna be in the high tier. And, and that's where we would wind up losing money, or it would cost us higher rates by doing that with IRWD.
And a unit is how much?
748 gallons.
748 gallons.
Yeah. So, so remember that you have to look at the property tax bill, because when, when you, if you look at a water bill from IRWD, you see that what the person's paying per month, very easily. But, you, that's not the whole picture. You have to look at their property tax bill, because they charge you a lot of money on the property tax bill. You have to add that to this. So, that, be aware of that, too. But we did look at that, believe me.
Yeah, we don't like this either, because we all have the same, we all have basically 30 acre lots here, 5 acre, on average. And, and it's-
And I hate, believe it, I hate my bill, too, with it.
We hate it, too. You know, I lost, like, my top yard is gone because of the drought. I mean, it's just gone. And it, it's, it's sad, but, you know, gotta, gotta make it like Tucson now, so...
One other component on the property tax is that, the bigger the lot size in IRWD, the bigger the property tax, too. So, not only using more water and probably, you know, paying, they're, you know, at the end of the year, there, it's probably a lot, you know, a lot, so...
Most people are worried about bigger lots in Irvine.
Yeah.
Just, just-
Oh, oh, you'll-
Yeah.
Go for it.
When the, when we had to release water due to spillway conditions, imagine the bond pits benefited from that? Is that true?
With the water coming down the creek, yeah, it does benefit the bond-
Did we receive any benefits from that release, or that just?
It just kinda goes into the aquifer. It goes in the aquifer.
Well, it, you do. You, you do, it's indirect. Basically, you give Orange County Water District the ability to, to make the basin production percentage higher, because there's more water. That means you can pump more groundwater, before getting the penalties I was talking about before. So, that OCWD sets a percentage that you're allowed to pump of groundwater, and this year, I think it was like 77%. And if you go over that, and the other 23% has to come from something else, which in Serrano's case, is the lake. For everybody else, it's imported water. And so, if you go over that 77%, then you pay a penalty, which is the same or more than the cost of imported water, so you don't get a benefit out of it.
And if we got, if we got a construction supply, you know, we're gonna have to-
The-
You've got a video coming up, you know, about those percolating pits, and we're just gonna do that.
Well, you know, it takes a long time for this to happen, and, you know, then you've got the permits, the design engineering, and that's, and we, even now, they've changed some of the engineering that was required, they upped the standards in the middle of this as well. So, and, but it's gonna make our dam and the spillway even more robust for 100 years, so that's not worth, or more, actually. I think, what's, what's the, 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 the design is what, 500-year design or something like that?
It's, it's a maximum probable flood of that, that's about basically four to six times larger than what the, currently, the, the spillway is set for, so, I think it's a little bit harder than that.
Thousand-year, thousand-year flood of it. Which has happened, you can see the rocks, you know, that they moved them, and it was probably water, because it's one of the most dense things in the universe, so, once it gets to rolling.
There's one other thing that we, we have to look at, as, as a board, we have to look at, we don't have to look, we, we can't just look at 20 years. If the, if the folks back in the 1917, when they were thinking, when they were building a dam or thinking about building that, if they were just looking at 20 years, they probably would've said, this, this isn't gonna work, or even if they were just looking at even a shorter time than that. But, if you look at the numbers that Jerry has produced, and go out 30 years, we're so far ahead, as far as our, our net money into this, into the district, and covering the debt, covering, covering all of the expenses, it, it becomes much better than if, if we don't have the lake. If we don't have the lake, of course, there's, there's not gonna be that, that benefit to the, to the future. So, we, we have to look at the future, too, just like those guys that built a dam 100 years ago.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't see, no, she is.
On your presentation where you're talking about advantages and disadvantages, you said you significantly revenue from water sales and storage. What is significant, is that 10%?
Well, what it is, is that, we have a flexibility, we, see, Mayberry Ranch, see, it's an area that we, that we used to serve as a irrigation district, but, and Orange took it over, we still have a right of serving. So, it is, we actually sell native water, you know, that serves that community. We sell that water at a certain price at Orange, we lose that ability. We're talking 60%, 70, I mean, a, a big, large amount of, of water cells gone, ability.
Well, actually, it's about 20% of our total revenue, this, to the city of Orange. I mean, and that's a significant amount.
It could be more in the future, because you're gonna have a higher dam, and there's also the opportunity for additional storage, and so, there's, and there are potentially other customers out there.
Okay.
And there, there are things that have to be done, but, you know, when you have an asset that it's been improved, it's gonna be expensive, but it also creates opportunities for offsets from being able to manage that resource.
Actually, you lose 100% ability to sell it, because you don't get it anymore.
Yes, Robert.
The recreation asset of our total savings.
Okay. Ask that question again, please.
Of maximizing the recreation asset.
See, right now, we're currently in discussions with the county. We've cooperatively joined a, you wanna speak on, but I'll just try to do this. So, we have a joint agreement with the county and Irvine Ranch. So, what we've done, I think this is public knowledge now, so, basically, we have conjoined, not physically really conjoining the properties out there at Irvine Lake, where we have this area that is, we can use the property in the future- area that is, we can use the property in the future, down, many years down the road, if we wanted to dredge and have additional storage, or right now, it's above the flood plain. So what we're doing is we're conjoining the properties in an agreement with the county of Orange to maximize the recreational use out there, maybe more events, et cetera, like that, and share in funding, or excuse me, share in revenue, et cetera, because they're gonna do a master lease agreement and go out with an RFP, and who knows what'll end up out there. Might be some great, good boating, and more fishing, we don't know, but whoever it is that offers the most benefit, and we get the most, obviously the most revenue, will be the one that's selected. So we're.
Do we get twenty-five percent of that revenue?
There's a little bit of a, uh, I think it's, what is it, twenty? I think it is twenty, yes, twenty-five percent.
Approximately that, yeah. And there's, there's, and the county's gonna administer this, they're gonna incur overhead for that, and so they have to be reimbursed for their costs. But it, it, it's gonna wind up being a master RFP, where we're gonna see who, if we have large vendors, who can come in and really run a top-notch organization. So right now, it's pretty limited, the recreation out there, but in the past, there was a lot more things. And there was almost ten years where there was no recreation out there. So that, that's, uh, that's moving in a, in a positive direction. Long-term, what kind of revenue it generates, uh, you know, to be determined, but it is an asset, and Serrano owns twenty-five percent of that recreation asset, but it's gonna be bundled with, with the county and with Irvine Ranch Water District to work together to make sure we have the greatest opportunity to provide recreation opportunities for this community and other communities nearby.
Recreation has to be limited also to what's safe for a reservoir. I mean, like, there's no body contact out there, so you can't have diving platforms on, on shore.
What percentage of your reserves are you willing to commit to this project?
All of them.
Well, most, well, at first, it's gonna be most. But again, it's a loan, right? So you're gonna have, so when you say, I said, what percentage of current, I know, not all of them. It's gonna be, maybe twenty-five, thirty percent is gonna be for the, for upfront, because what it is, you're gonna be getting a loan, and you're gonna be getting income, right? It's gonna continue to build on your reserves, so then you're ready to start making the loan payment.
Do you guys have some idea what percentage of the reserves that you will have approximately by twenty-eight?
Yeah, we, we actually have that, but I don't have that in front of me, I don't. Do you have the, do you have the performa? I don't think you have the performa.
Uh, this one, right here. And what year did you want?
Twenty-twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Our reserves are projected to be, uh.
Glasses deceived, it's so small.
Yeah, you want this one.
It's an eye chart.
Looking at about sixteen million dollars.
Sixteen million?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? You've got this page here, this whole kind of paperwork, and you've got a number on these. You've got a lot of forecasts, you've got more usage and costs and stuff. I'd like to see if you took this page and you're gonna actually come up with a number on this page, to see if, how we're gonna pay for it.
Oh, we're gonna pay for it.
Got one there. How do we pay for it all?
And, and if it's a number, I was gonna say, if it's seventy-five million, the number we're shooting for, and if we get the money, if we get five million from the N10, that money comes from the infrastructure bill quicker than two thousand and eight, are we gonna put that in the reserves and hold it? So, it's a timing issue.
No, because what happens is that the way that these earmarks go is that we may, again, this is what we call our best guessment right now. I mean, we, we won't have like fourteen different scenarios that we're displaying here, but we're showing like right now, seventy-five million, you know, a certain amount of time, and then we're gonna have the San Diego, I mean, the Smith Reservoir Project. We're delaying that at a certain point, but if we do get the Young Kim money for the, then we gotta move that project up, because they give us only two years to utilize that money. So that might shift this around a little bit. But we can't put that money in reserves and just wait, because they're giving us a timeline to spend that money.
But that would be another thing that would be useful to your purpose, but it's not more than just where the money, you know, how it's colored.
But we don't, those are the unknown, any, any of the ones that we're shooting for, that's any, um, any of the grant funding, et cetera, we have not in here at all, because those are total unknowns.
Are there any estimates?
We don't know.
What grants was going after?
We know what we're going after, we know if we're gonna get them, though.
Oh, I know, but I mean, are the grants like five dollars or the grants?
No, no, we're going for grant, we're going for grants that are hopefully upwards of hundreds of millions of dollars, or seventy.
Grant writer?
We got a grant, yes, we had a grant writer, we got two lobbyists, we have a federal and state lobbyist, and we're going after every grant there is.
Nice to know. I mean, I get told to tell you, we want to know where the money comes, on how much you expect to make. Because maybe we know somebody, too.
One thing you might be interested in is that, uh, the adjustments in the rates, if, we've got it all calculated out there, our financial expert has done it. The, the coverage on the, of the cost of the loan is, what, uh, one point two?
One, one point two-five, one five. Two and a quarter times. Your revenue is one point two-five over the cost of the loan.
Yeah, over the cost of the loan.
Plus, we don't have to start paying on the loan until, what is it, five years after the completion, the project, if we start paying on it.
Years after.
I have a question a little bit. I've been in finance for fifteen, some years, and I can tell you that the details necessary to give you a direct answer to that number has to be calculated by people who are professionals. And I would get it myself, I would hire a succinct actuary to do this for me. But, but what we do here is we elect people who have the ability to not only do that or hire, who they feel is necessary to do that. So when it comes to cost, if you want an explanation on it, you better talk to the accountant that's gonna take you, in other words, get up to speed with what those five or six guys have there at right now, before you ask your questions.
Yeah, we, we do both, Wayne. We, we have people that help us, and we use our knowledge.
Of course.
Um, as far as the grants go, we pay a lot of money every month for the lobbyists. We're, we're shooting for getting some good grants, and we're hopeful. We're trying everything we can do. We have state, we have federal. Those are unknowns, because we don't know if we'll get the grant, we don't know if we'll qualify.
Most of that is you're dealing with politicians.
Yeah, we're meeting with Young Kim, Young Kim tomorrow, actually, to further what we have going on with her right now.
So your calculation, you did not factor in any grants?
Correct. They're unknowns.
Correct.
You can't.
Any grants, which is break down.
That's correct. That's, that's our hope.
That's essentially what, in a nice way, like you're saying, yes.
I think if anyone is interested, you can come by the district office, and we can furnish the sheet of all the grants that we've applied for.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's available to the public, anyone that wants to see it at all. But my concern is you start listing, we're looking at this grant, this grant, hey, and you go, oh, thing's gonna be paid for. We don't know that. We have no way of knowing that.
But we're shooting for eight figures.
Right.
Period.
Each one has its own application process, each of these grant programs, they're, they kinda tend to come out in big blocks, like, so the state has four hundred millions. Now, it sounds like a lot of money, it is a lot of money, but there's a lot of high-hazard dams. So we're competing against San Diego, Santa Clara Valley Water District, everyone, there's a lot of people with high-hazard dams, although, you know, this is, this is the only major reservoir in Orange County, right? And so it, it's very significant, and so, you know, we're hoping that'll be persuasive as part of the application process, but, and the feds, too, right? The Bureau of Reclamation has funds, and so it's just, it's hard to say which ones are gonna be successful. At this point, it's a guess. But, you know, that, that's why you gotta make the most conservative assessment as to, okay, what's it gonna cost? But as was just stated, it could come down, and, and we're hopeful it will.
There's also, Irvine Ranch Water District has five dams that they've gotta spend money on, so we're not the only ones. I mean, they, they, but again, they have a bigger base to spread it out. One of my concerns has always been as a resident, is I wanna see Villa Park be a separate city. And once we start giving up water rights, and we give up recreation, and we start giving stuff up, all of a sudden, you got a, an organization called Laughco that says, hey, let's consolidate the rest, let's get rid of the city and put it into Orange or somewhere else. I don't wanna see that happen. I've always said we should, and I hate paying the water rates, believe me, I hate it every month, but we gotta stay a city. I mean, that, those are the type things that put, make us unique in Orange County, is that we're a unique city, and I think we wanna stay a unique city. Another thing we can, we, we look at is the, that helps us look better for grants and that type of thing is the fact that that dam is critical for in donation, it protects most of Orange, all the way over to Garden Grove.
Past Garden Grove, you know, even coast to Mesa, because the natural flow of the river actually went all the way to Seal Beach. All that stuff is all reclaimed. So if it came down a big wash of water, first, the Villa Park Dam is the first line of defense after the, the Santiago Creek Reservoir berm. Then it comes on down, it'll, it'll take all this out. It'll be gone, if that, if that dam breaks. It'll be really bad, but that's why the Corv engineers built that Villa Park Dam, in case that, it was, it was breached and, like, I don't know how much it is, but it's, it's big. There's actually water behind that, too, as well, the Villa Park Dam itself. But that's, that's, that's all flood control. That's all that was.
Go ahead.
Have any of the reports or studies that you have, that, 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 that you're, I mean, everybody up here is, 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 is,[1302.49]
Yeah, but we have hired other folks, hey, look at this, look at that. But I mean, we've had financial analysts, you know, do performas and walk through it and they, I would say that they did fact-check us. They were a third party, because we do it, we develop a performer, we give it to them, they go through it, so we do do a third party. Oh, no, that, the cost of Irvine Ranch, we've had third parties, we've had what we call professional, what do they call them, constructability engineers review the Irvine Lake Dam, if that's what you're talking about, the design, et cetera.
I'm talking about the buildings. Taxes.
Well.
You said you've done that.
I have done that, but there's been other agencies that have done it as well, they do their own rate studies. I did my own, I want to say I don't believe them, I want, which I should have just, I believe them because it ended up being true, because a lot of other water agencies always are comparing to IRWD because they think IRWD is the cheapest or something like that and they find out, no, there's a lot of that adwarem in there when they get seventy-five million dollars, eighty million dollars in tax revenue, not rate-based revenue. I had to see how that happened. I got fifty tax parcel numbers, I select myself and I verified what I saw that I didn't believe other agencies did it right, and I went, the number is right. So I verified, and that would be Mesa Water did some studies, Raptalis, Tribucos done studies, they always are referring and like rechecking other people's studies, so.
We've been using Philbin and Rollup, who's a, does most of the bond work and municipal finance for Orange County Water District, a lot of the large agencies. So they're sophisticated group and they've been assisting with evaluating options. And so it's been vetted through Philbin and Rollup now. I'm not sure what study you're looking for, but a lot, I think, I suspect a lot of questions you're asking would, I think they have been run off, bounced off, they're experts. They've been involved for about two years now.
We certainly don't have the in-house expertise for that. We use nationally recognized folks that do this all over the country, actually.
Here's again, my area, investment bankers, the parlay line, Goldman Sachs, others, they sell these bonds. They have customers in the wing waiting to buy bonds from this water district or this far area up in the valley, whatever, they think they're living off that and believe me, when they go to market, there's a little guy who's going to buy a piece of that big five hundred million dollar bond, that guy has to prove because the FCC is going to be all over them.
FTC.
The SEC, the FDIC.
Yeah.
They have to go through rigmarole before this bond. If we parlay the money, you can bet the best going to be framed home by every professional that's going to represent that bond because they're liable if there's malfeasance in the market. And I mean, that's nick money when you consider the barrel and cheap and get more than the cost. So that's why we rely on checking balance systems and you guys getting to get it the bond approved or taken by an investment banker without having been certified.
That's true.
Yep, I'm going to let Vittorio speak on that, because we've actually, in order to get a credit rating and even get the WIFI alone, there are multiple folks looking at our stuff and I'll let Vittorio mention.
Part of our entire evaluation of projects, we put together a performer, an activer, a branch advisor to look at this. With that, they went through the litany of doing bond issuances or replacement loans. The best vehicle for this debt was a federal government loan. And the requirements on this, you go through the EPA to get this loan, I mean, the litany of reporting that I've got to produce and Philbin and Rollup and our general manager has got to produce just to get through the later regulatory, just to get the loan, it's about a nine to ten month underwriting process. So they're looking at it. They're looking at our balance sheet, they're looking at how we collect revenue, the customer base, they're looking at every element, so it's a pretty good basis to look at what we do. So that's based on those third parties. Any rate studies that are active and our general manager, Raptalis is another company, each water district does those secondary reviews and we all use that information to make sure what's necessary.
Any other questions?
Well, no, you certainly, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just wondered, is the schedule not going to be an issue with twenty-five percent of this project activity? We have to coordinate with everybody else on board of our team here in the county and the surrounding water district.
I'm trying to understand your question, so.
We can't drive the plan because we only have twenty-five percent.
Correct.
We have other partners that have to approve the design, come up with the money, the same kind of stuff, I was wondering, we're working with everybody else on board.
There's only one other partner.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're partnering with Irvine Ranch Water District, they are taking the design lead. However, I'm involved and there are other folks involved doing reviews, et cetera, that's, but we're in coordination and yes, we, time say, yeah, we approve that, et cetera, because there are timelines, like you're saying, like you have to make payments or there's cost increases, et cetera, but yes, we're in lockstep with them.
Your payment are twenty-five percent right along, as we go along as well in the design phase, as an example. So then, then you've got the state of California, which demands tight timelines and then their approvals are typically lagging. So you're absolutely correct to be concerned about the timeline. You know, we're concerned too. So we're pushing them as much as we can because we see, as you all, that the costs are going up as we wait. So we want it to go down as well and that's also why we have this concerted effort to try to find offsetting funds wherever we can. And that's what we haven't done in the past and now we're doing it. So it's, we've become a little more sophisticated in the last year since Jerry and his crew have been here, so that's a good part.
One thing I do want to mention is that the timeline of the project or the design, we do want that done ASAP, but done right, okay? So this way we then have all the information to then have more clearer, you know, a clearer vision of what the costs are, you know? At that point, then we can then reassess. Because right now the forecast is, you know, that seventy or that three hundred million. We want to get the design done as soon as possible so we can then make, do we want to do a little delay or do you just want to get moving forward on it? Because maybe the costs come down a lot, it's like, hey, let's get moving, you know? Maybe the economy changes, lumber and concrete gets a lot cheaper miraculously, you know? But, and you want to get moving on it. So we do want to get it done as soon as possible, design, we're not necessarily trying to push construction tomorrow, though.
But then, again, the approval process is lengthy as well, that's a real kicker, I mean, and we've been doing the design work already now for what, a year and a half?
More than that.
More than that now.
And the environmental stuff, and you've got, yeah, environmental impact, of course, CIRs.
Yeah, we do want to get it done as quickly as we can. It started out thirty-five thousand was our portion and it escalated to seventy-five.
Thirty-five million.
Cost of construct, I meant that. But add more zeros. So, yeah, we want to get it done as soon as possible because costs just continue to skyrocket.
Actually, I've got one other, if I could, just one thing, and this is, this is an issue across California and probably the United States, and that is that a lot of these, a lot of our current infrastructure was built in the seventies or before and then things are just getting older. And so things are starting to go past their useful lives and so across the board, utilities are seeing cost increases because facilities have to be replaced. And so that's just an unfortunate situation that we all kind of have to wrangle with and try to get cost effective this as best we can.
Yeah, because our system here is average about sixty years old or more, when you think about it, because that's how long Villa Park has really been here and there's been houses, of course, back into the thirties and forties as well in this area, so.
Thirty is nine years.
Yes, it does. Today it does. So all this, and you can see, you know, every week we're replacing something because, you know, the infrastructure, the piping is wearing out or it's needs to be replaced or it's rubbing up against some rocks down below. Like, for instance, now when we replace pipe, we encase it in concrete, all the mains. So you have to do that, otherwise you have the other, have the other problem with the corrosion problem with this alkaline soil. So there's lots of little things that we're doing along the way and that's really the reason for our reserves, we build up because we can't wait, you can't wait for us to get three million dollars to fix something that just broke. And we've had those kind of accidents and we had to get to it right away. So we have that kind of wherewithal and also the borrowing power, which helps us, you know, from the financial aspect and our ratings. So we've actually gradually improved all of that at the same time. But it's interesting, all the, what goes on and you just, all we wanted to do is to make sure you guys are getting your water because we get the same water, we get the same water. Like Brad said, I drink the tap water too, so it's just fine, it's fine.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. We have very excellent pressure, huge pressure, I'm getting a hundred and fifteen pounds down there.
Almost too good.
Yeah, I've got a regulator on it, hold it down to seventy-five.
It's a good idea.
If we put a regulator all over the city at seventy-five, wouldn't we save water?
Well, it's complicated because what it is typically in the system, if you had what I call much more hilly situation, like where, I know where you live, so if like within a block it went up twenty, thirty feet in elevation, it's much more easy to have regulators. But we, what the problem is, we have to pump water from our well system and we have to force it up basically to Smith and then we pump it to Smith. I mean, yeah, unfortunately, we do have higher pressure, but that's the, you know, surprisingly, hey, we don't, even though we had the break over off of, what is it, Center and Santiago, I mean, we don't have that many main breaks, so, you know, so we have pretty good pipe, but things do break. Things are old and people.
Even have to boost them for the people that live up on the hill because of the change in elevation. That has to be boosted.
Yeah.
Because they don't have your hundred-plus pressure.
But we don't have the pressure issues that River Linda does, so, yeah, so they have a lot more elevation changes than we do.
Where you do save water is those, some folks think that it's really nice to put their sprinkler system in before the regulator because they like to see their whole lawn misted with water instead of actually properly being put on because the sprinkler systems are not designed for a hundred and fifty PSI, they're designed for sixty PSI. So do not think you're getting some great amount of water flow because you circumvented that regulator, just a little advice.
It did that, it worked, you're right.
Yeah.
I put a lot of them at the house in the backyard, I'm getting full pressure now. I did. Blue, blue, that old food.
Yeah.
You've got to be careful doing that.
Absolutely.
I'd like to say, you guys just done excellent job, yes. Thank you very much, really appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your comments because I think we've seen some places where we have a little, put a few shortcomings on some of the details that we'll have to make sure we address. We're taking notes on all that as well.
Sorry, I have one question.
Yeah.
From the time we start draining the lake to the time this project is finished, four years later, how are we going to compensate for the loss in supply of water? Is that going to affect our rates during that four years? Do we have to buy that high-cost import water?
Yes. So what we've done, though, we, it's figured in the forecast, though, we figure this in our project timeline, our forecast, and that we know we're not going to have any water in the lake. And so we've built that in the cost, yes, we're going to have to buy the higher-cost import water, but the unfortunate, the most important thing is you don't have the ability to sell the native water at that cheap price, so then, yeah, we have to use the import water. You're correct.
It's too bad that Oroville Dam failed and all this regulation came down and, on the other hand, though, that the state has identified, we weren't the ones that inspect our dam, the state inspected the dam, they have professionals that do it and they deemed it not safe. So we want a safe dam for all of us, of course, but it comes at a cost to all of us, too. Like, we had to get rid of that eleven million dollars of water, it wasn't our decision, they made us get rid of it. So that's a bummer, but anyways, we want a safe dam and that's what happened.
I want to make one last point. We inspect this dam every year. Okay, so this isn't a dam that's like, ah, we just wait for something to happen. This is inspected every year, it's mandated by the Division of Safety of Dams and we have a checklist, we have a report, we actually hire professionals, third-party folks that come out, they inspect it and the DOCD reviews their inspections and then we have to do certain little things in between. This spillway circumstance was just something just completely, you know, out of left field that we didn't expect, that we did not plan for, did not save for this expectation, so that's why you're seeing this.
We knew we needed a new intake tower, we knew that, but this combining it will save us a lot of money, too, actually, in the end.
Well, in the real world is, the dam itself is still in good shape, it's the tower and the spillway that we got to do.
Right.
So, I mean, worried about being wiped out, you don't have to worry about that.
Go ahead, question.
I have a question, I just want to find out what percentage of Orange, or overall, what percentage is the service to Orange?
The amount of water.
Maybe it's better to do in a number of connections, it's a small amount, what would be the number of connections, maybe?
Two hundred and thirty.
Yeah, like two hundred and thirty connections.
Are you talking about the service connections for the area? We have meters to Orange, okay, about two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty.
Yeah, so it's just kind of some of the surrounding streets right around Villa Park that puke into Orange, so we service those.
Ten percent.
It's part of our district and this district from a hundred years, I mean, it's been there forever. It's a matter of some of.
Well, what we've been referring to about selling water to Orange is not those two hundred and thirty connections, just so you know. We're selling bulk water to the city of Orange in addition to the two hundred and thirty.
There's no rate.
Well, you mean what we sell them?
What we sell those to?
No, same rate.
Same as the actuarial.
It's the same, same, same everything.
It's all the same.
That's correct, yep.
The wholesale.
Yep.
And there's the wholesale rate.
Percent, ten percent.
Yeah, we sell, well, it's right over here, the connection into Orange.
To Orange, yeah.
To their general system. And we actually help them and they help us.
Right.
There's a lot of cooperation, doesn't, which doesn't come out in that grant report, all the water agencies are cooperative.
During the construction phase, we will have that as backup, we will have a connection with Orange where we can take water from their system.
From them, yeah, if needed.
If needed, yeah.
If needed.
But we're still also going to have the connection with, that we can get water and bypass the lake.
Yeah, the met water.
Irvine Ranch, because they are cooperating with us during this construction, so they're going to, we're going to bypass the lake through this bypass pipe that we can get untreated met water for the first time, like ten years, directly, whether, rather than going into the lake and, you know, basically letting it flow.
That's part of that, that's part of that gravity-fed water from Matthews.
Right.
That will eventually end up in our treatment plant.
Right.
So we work together.
And it's cheaper for us to buy the untreated from met rather than the treated because we have a treatment plant. So we save money buying the untreated, bring it right to our treatment plant and treat it.
We've thought of everything, basically. Yeah, we think of, I think we've thought of probably every potential avenue of sources of water at the best cost, you know, reasonable cost and actually some of the best, what I call reliability in the county here, so.
You know what, I was on Sunday council here for ten years, which is why I talk to so much. And I want to tell you that if you go sit in on Irvine Water District Board, or you go over here to the city of Orange and talk to the water department or anything else, I got to tell you, you'll come back here and recognize the talents that we have here because to maintain our independence over all these years, where we can hang on to what we have without being stolen or talked out of here, it's the same with transportation. Villa Park rode, the Sex Lane rode, let us do it, split our city right in half. These people have to be conscious of the political side as well as the numbers. And we watch these guys that are elected and if they aren't doing their job, we'll talk to them about it. And you guys have heard this tonight, pick out one of these guys up here, pick his brain, no way for a meeting like this, but you'll find out they know a hell of a lot more about water than you and I do. And thank God I don't have to take the heat because the boss is in there.
Yeah, thank you, Wayne, that's a good point. We're always available to you guys. I mean, we work for you guys, so feel free, if you go on our website, you can get our individual email addresses, we're always available to answer any questions, you're welcome to come to our meetings, we have one meeting a month at Serrano Water District, it's the fourth Tuesday of every month, it's public, it's open, you can come and listen, but we're here for you guys.
We may not have as many answers as Wayne seems to think, but we can find.
We'll find out. We'll get back to you, yeah.
What we're going to be doing tomorrow is going to give you.
It's actually going to be at Irvine Lake. We're going to meet her at Irvine Lake and we're going to show her all the infrastructure down there.
We actually did a similar thing last year with Katie Porter when she was our rep, so, you know, we're, we've been working with the congressional people for quite some time and that's, and that's why it helps a lot to do all of that type of work with the legislators because they know where the money is. Or they think they know and, you know, but they got to approve, so.
We, we're going to at least get a shot at it.
Right.
Because if we don't have all of these different folks, third-party people that we've hired, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know as much, we just couldn't. And so we have to go after it because it, the cost-benefit ratio is great.
Unfortunately, the politician always doesn't have the same intentions as we do when it comes to how they're going to use the money that they have control of.
Right.
And we all have seen that many times over.
So now you can stop us at the store and ask us questions.
Absolutely.
That's a store of sorts, because I'm usually in Ralph's.
I got to go at least once a day, so.
Any other questions? Now's the time or any other time.
You can write us, you can call the district, you can leave a message, talk to Laura, well, we'll get back to you, that's what we're here for.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Again, I encourage you, go on and look at the grand jury report because from our city, to me, it's scary what they want to do, the recommendations, and you read the whole report and it really opens your eyes on what they're trying to do in the county, so.
Because it's definitely a South County-driven grand jury. They don't have any storage there at all. They don't have anything.
They don't have the aquifer either.
Yeah.
They don't have anything like that.
So no.
And when they built up that South County, they didn't take in all this infrastructure that they were going to need and the amount of people in the water, they didn't take that in consideration, they built it. And now they want us to pay for their water, basically.
They also built new homes back in the eighties and nineties off a supply line that was built in the fifties and sixties. And so the Allen McCollough Pipeline is considered a pretty questionable asset right now, so they're afraid that there's going to be outages and et cetera during an earthquake because that pipeline is extremely, and I don't want to, you know, get too deep into that because they'd hate me saying that, but it's very questionable. I can say, so now they're looking at other ways to stick a straw somewhere else and the Orange County groundwater basin is a place where they can get a straw and then it puts constraints on us because they're saying, oh, you use less now in Serrano, so this way there's more water available for them. That's really what it is.
Wait a minute, my credit's a hundred and fifty down there now, I've got you for water.
Well.
You've got to think about that.
Well, you can haul it from here in a truck down to there.
There you go.
That's funny.
But again, just ask us questions, call the district, we have phone numbers, I'll give you my cards.
Absolutely.
We want you to be involved. It's only better if you're involved, it's only better. So that's, we demanded to have this meeting amongst ourselves because.
I just finished a project, sixty-six hundred square feet of my half-acre lot is now complete with curb irrigation system. And I replaced that, not that amount of turf, about four thousand feet of turf with fifteen hundred feet of limitation.
Nice.
Well, you're no longer going to be a good customer now. You're going to be using a lot less water.
Yeah, right. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.